Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Libiad?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Here. I'd like to say everyone please rise and sit to the left. May I make my remarks to the flag, United States of America, the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the biblical covenant of Jesus Christ. Thank you. Just for the record, we've got a client's meeting with five members, and I'm going to be placing Marjorie Byrne as a member of the client's meeting, and Morty Gross as well, as a member of the client's meeting. Madam Secretary, can I have a brief two minutes for September 11th, 2017? Motion for Hal Halverson, second. Second, Mayor Kelly. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Madam Secretary, any persons on the client's meeting?
Yes, I have a request. Monty Azarowski, in reference to the old business of the number four, we hold one zero, obligation may or no son, could please carry to December 4th?
This is the, this is, this is-
The interpretation?
The interpretation. Jerry?
Yes.
I think this is going on forever and a day. I think he's just going to put them up when he's ready to go re-notice and re-apply.
That's fine, Chairman, it has been many, many months.
It's like, um-
Can we tell him to re-notice and re-apply?
Yeah, this is, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I think we just, um, whatever he's ready, let him just, um, re-notice and re-apply. Does anyone agree with this agreement, Madam?
He'd like it to be carried from the October meeting to December 4th, here he notices will be given for that re-apply.
I will tell him, it's the board's decision that it can be heard on December, but he has to re-apply and make up.
Yeah, we're going to start all over, because every, every month we keep it on push and pull. Every, whenever he's ready, we'll apply, we'll notice, like a regular application. Anyone have any objection there?
How many times is he moving?
This is like, third time.
Oh, he's, at least he's-
Yeah, but this is going forward, this has to do with the board making decisions, is that correct, Jerry?
That's, that's correct.
So like, let's go to the judge, um, the Sunday office, okay? Okay, can I have a motion? Motion, motion from Mayor Kelly?
What is the motion?
To, to, to re-apply and re-notice, whenever he's ready to come.
I'll send a letter out, Mr. Green, I'll call you in.
Okay?
Do you need a phone?
What?
Do you need a phone on it?
Yes, go ahead, just a motion for a second.
Okay, I have a mo-, I have a motion from Mayor, a second from Mr. Inger, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes, okay. Um, anything else?
Yes, I have a request from Josh Schmuckler on P.O. number 4036, Captain Ryan Lyons, to carry to November 14th, they still did not admit the documents that we had submitted from the last meeting.
Good, sorry.
Do they have to be noticed that you were in this court?
I'll, I'll- Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman. I believe the documents were submitted, or they were finished, but they didn't get in time for the, for 10 days before the meeting, so we understand if, if the board requires us to read it-
I don't think we received-
Okay, no problem, I, I did get a message, they were, they were completed, I thought they got in late, but we will make sure they get in at least 10 days before the next hearing. If it requires to re-notice, we will, I prefer not to, but it's up to you.
Chairman, I would, I would recommend that they have to re-notice, it's been a few months, there was an objector here earlier-
Right.
-left, could have delayed, but I think everyone contributed by-
That is fine, we have no objection.
Are you ready to re-notice, are you not ready for November, then?
Yeah, well, it, it's going to be on for November, right now we're going, I will follow with the client, make sure they get 10 cop, uh, amount of copies you need, at least 10 days before the hearing, and I'll re-notice.
Adam, I'm told by Fran that the certified listing you've been using was fine then, but now it's stale, you need to get a new certified list.
No problem, no problem, we'll request it tomorrow.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion, uh, who, who, to, um-
Average of the November meeting with re-notice, yes.
With notice.
Table, 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 um, 4036? Motion, Madam Marjorie Byrne, second? Yeah, second by Mayor Kelly, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes, okay, so anyone that's here for P.O. number 4010, Frankage Martin Nelson, and 4036, um, I'm sorry, anyone that's here for 4010, that'll be heard whenever you can re-notice, and 4036 will be back on for November, um, what's it, November 13th?
13th.
November 13th, um, after you re-notice properly. Next.
And, and Fran's submitted.
I'm not in, can't be November, excellent, next, okay, so that's, do we have a problem? Okay, one more person?
Mr. Chairman, on 4028, the applicant would like to carry that application.
4048, Bernard Warman?
Bernard Warman.
Okay, and even while you carry it, is the second time he's carrying it, or is it-
This is the second time he's carrying it, uh, he, he had an objector, the objector's here again, uh, the objector indicated to the attorney, he's okay with one more carry, uh, from what I, I've heard secondhand, is he's maybe going to sell the property and just be done with it, but if not, uh, he would come at the November meeting. And, and hopefully, if he comes at the November meeting, he meets with the neighbor and, uh, we, we don't have to waste anybody's time.
Okay, and we have one objector here tonight, or two, three, one?
On behalf of a really large community. Any more for this one here?
I don't think so.
We're, we're hitting, uh- June 12th, what's that, June 12th was per-
But, but that wasn't, that wasn't the applicant that, the applicant only requested last one.
Correct. We have, we have, one of them, we have-
We have to be thorough.
Yeah, but we, one of them was our fault, we didn't get them. Okay, go ahead, please, um, turn around.
Well, I think you're not going to testify-
No, not tonight.
Do you have an objection to the internment?
No, no, I do not object to the second adjournment, in fact, I offered that, uh, the last one was in the interest of trying to communicate and resolve the matter constructively, I think that's the way we should pursue these kinds of matters, uh, we were not able to have that meeting, as I said, to the applicant's representation, I'm an old stickball player, two is fine, three I will object to.
Is there a statement?
Sure, uh, my name for the record, properly, is Frederick W. Robison, R-O-B-I-S-O-N, unless you're really upset with me, you can call me Rob, rather than Frederick.
Uh, can you live in the neighborhood?
Seventy-nine Eagle Ridge Circle, I am one of the closest homes to 320 Cross Street, if not the closest home.
Okay.
November 11th.
Anyone, any other objection?
13th.
Thirteen.
13th. Is it over? 13th, 11th, 11th. Any other objection on this one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I have a motion to carry 4028, Bernard Warman? Motion by Mayor Kelly, can I have a second? Second, second by Hal Halverson, um, once I've put it in the order, with a waiver of time, and-
Yes.
And-
Yes.
What?
Waiver of time and everything else the board wants.
Everything the board wants, be careful. Okay.
Brian, check the certified date.
Well, we're, we're, we're not re-noticing, if we have to re-notice, then we'll, we'll check the certified.
And if we don't, one second.
But we're good for three months.
But the, the original notice is then carried without notice, so we're good, unless it, it doesn't happen this time, in which case, we'll get a new, new list.
A new list, okay, fine.
Yep.
Okay, um, can I have a, a motion, Hal Halverson, can I have a motion? Motion from Mayor Hal Halverson?
Second, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Hargage Malzatoro?
Resolution to approve 12 B. Flex housing units in one single family.
Can I have a motion?
I have a motion.
You can make a motion. Um, Mayor?
I have a motion.
Before, yes, can I have a, a motion? Motion by Mr. Inger, second?
Kelly?
Yeah.
A second, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. 40, 40, 43, nine vehicles?
4038.
Sorry, 4038?
They have seen that-
That was a small corner, please.
On a tiny road?
Yes. Guys, can I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Inger, can I have a second? Second, 40 Gross? Can I have a secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. 40, 40, 43, nine vehicles?
4038.
Sorry, 4038?
They have seen that-
That was a small corner, please.
On a tiny road?
Yes. Guys, can I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Inger, can I have a second? Second, 40 Gross? Can I have a secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Hargage Malzatoro?
Resolution to approve 12 B. Flex housing units in one single family.
Can I have a motion?
I have a motion.
You can make a motion. Um, Mayor?
I have a motion.
Before, yes, can I have a, a motion? Motion by Mr. Inger, second? Second? Can I have a second? Second, Mr. Gross? Can I have a secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Gross, can you do it one more time?
I don't know. 4037A, zombie mode, and both dead.
That was the fourth, yes. Okay, can I have a motion? Motion by Mayor Kelly, second?
I'll second.
Hal Halverson, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
What do you hear?
Re-notice American Water?
Right, um, resolutions to approve the use variance, the preliminary and final site plan.
I'm making a motion. Motion by Mr. Halverson, second? Second, Mr. Gross?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. 40, 40, 43, nine vehicles?
4038.
Sorry, 4038?
They have seen that-
That was a small corner, please.
On a tiny road?
Yes. Guys, can I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Inger, can I have a second? Second, 40 Gross? Can I have a secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Nine vehicles?
40, 43?
It's, um, far as down, we have a channel.
Yeah, and that has a far as down, where the, where the alleys and parrots?
So is it just-
Right. Can I have a motion? I'll make a motion. Motion for Morty Gross, can I have a second? Mayor Kelly, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes. Nine vehicles? 40, 43?
It's, um, far as down, we have a channel.
Yeah, and that has a far as down, where the alleys and parrots?
So is it just-
Right. Can I have a motion? I'll make a motion. Motion for Morty Gross, can I have a second? Mayor Kelly, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Okay, what are we doing next?
Let me see, let me see if, uh, oh, oh, he is not away. Uh, yeah.
I'm happy for him.
Perfect, perfect, we just hit all the corners left, and, okay, yes? Yeah. Okay. Okay. I'm typing my copy, boy. Okay, uh, just for the record, okay, because Alice is here, and we see the later night meeting. Okay, um, okay. So we're going with, uh, P.O. number 4030, 4035, Karen Mattsord?
Chairman, I've just spoken with the attorney for both, uh, this application, 4035 and 4039.
Yes.
Points it here on both, so if you'd ask that we go forward with five of them first, at least, uh, you're really up here, super often, for example, that-
Uh, yeah, that's okay, let me just, let me just send him a text message.
Thank you.
That, 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 okay?
Right, I think that's going to make more sense.
You're here with me, and, uh-
What? What is this?
Okay, I guess I'm going to, then we're, we're here waiting, we're, okay, um, Feigenbaum?
You doing 4039?
What?
4039?
Yes.
Melvin Feigenbaum, Cedar Drive, lot two, CLP zone, construction, single-family home, with boat variances, and Terry boat engineer planner, August 10th, 2017, the applicant receiving boat variance relief for proposed, single-family dwell in front of, along Cedar Drive, requested front yard, rear yard, side yard, aggregate side yard, and building coverage relief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you ready?
Yeah, I see my text message, and I'll go through it.
Oh.
So, we-
No problem.
Okay? You're with me?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Miriam Morinstine, on behalf of the applicant, Melvin Feigenbaum, all the Feigenbaums want to do is retire to Lakewood and spend their golden years near their children, in a rural setting, far from the urban life that they had in Borough Park, in Brooklyn, so they secured this pristine piece of property that's in the Crystal Lake Preserve and has hundreds of acres of land in its backyard that will likely never be developed. The Feigenbaums very much wanted to be here this evening, and were supposed to be here last month, um, they are in Israel, though, celebrating the Sukkot, to celebrate the Sukkot holiday, so they could not be here tonight to tell you that part themselves. This application may appear to you at first glance to have a lot of variances on its surface, however, there was a previous application for this very parcel, under application 3882, made by the developer who created the lot. In that application, many of the variances being requested this evening were already granted, the variance for undersized lot was granted, as was that for the insufficient lot width, a variance for side yard setback of 10 feet was already granted as part of that application as well, a variance was granted for aggregate side yard setback of 25 feet, we are now requesting aggregate side yard setback of 22.38 feet.
Oh, you don't confess to me, what was, what was, um-
So the, the undersized lot variance was granted.
That's okay.
The lot width was granted, the side yard setback on one side of 10 feet was granted, the variance for aggregate side yard setback on the last application was granted at 25 feet, we are now requesting an aggregate side yard setback of 22.38 feet, a front yard setback variance at 30 feet was previously granted, and we're requesting 16.7, we are also requesting a variance for rear yard setback and for lot coverage, those two were not granted the last time around, um, a lot coverage variance, though, was grant, I'm sorry, a lot coverage variance was granted as part of the previous application at 30%. We are requesting slightly higher than that.
One second, one second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm close.
Okay. Yeah, I thought you haven't recovered from the fast yet.
Oh, okay, okay, let me start all over again, if you, I hope you don't mind.
No problem.
Required us three acres, we granted then what?
You granted exactly what there is on this lot.
Quarter acre.
A quarter acre.
A quarter acre, that's the, the lot width?
Granted.
Granted at 125 feet?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
That's the as-is.
That's staying as-is.
Run.
Uh, actually, it's 100, isn't it 137.5?
Uh, they, they went by the, an average or some-
I'm looking, I'm looking at the resolution.
Yes, but, there's different ways to measure it, you can measure it across here, that's 137, if you do an average of it, it's 125, but-
By the way, will this stand for this piece?
Yes.
Yes.
And I, I actually have a copy of the res, I have a copy of the resolution in hand.
I remember it, that's like, three years ago, right?
This was-
Very good.
November 17th, 2014.
Three years ago.
Yeah, pretty good, exactly, just about, yeah.
This is, this is right, well-
Lafayette.
Lafayette, you come in, you had all those developments going on, and the last piece, we can go further into Crystal Lake Reserve as the last piece on that block?
Correct.
Yes.
And you can't go anything further, and that's why it was granted, because it was an extension to what was there, and, and you can't get anywhere else in there.
Correct.
Okay. Um, front yard setback, what did we grant then?
Front yard setback, you granted 30 feet.
And now you want 16?
We'll get to the testimony. Let's just get to the facts.
I, okay, rear yard setback?
Was not granted last time, wasn't requested.
Wasn't requested, because it was regular, right?
Right.
So we, so, so, so we won 11 from whatever, whatever it was, uh, side yard setback we granted, we're all-
One side, you granted the 10 feet.
You granted the 10 feet, now you want, um, what do you want now?
Actually, hold on.
Still 10.
Still 10, no, it's-
Aggregate 22.38.
Why?
Aggregate's 22.38.
He's not sworn, so, but, uh-
What do you want now?
22.38.
Yeah, just tell me, because you're not-
Aggregate.
22.38, what was granted then?
25.
Which was fine, which is at that time, which was that was required amount of 40 to 10.
No, that's not required, of, um-
20, it was 25 then?
Forty is required.
It was 40 required.
Forty is required.
And we gave him 25 then?
You gave him 25 three years ago.
Okay, today he wants 22.
22.38.
Okay, um, and now, uh, building coverage?
10%, I'm sorry, up to 30%, 30, up, it says actually that up to 30% is permitted.
Yeah, because, because he didn't ask for a variance.
He didn't ask for a variance.
So is this now a variance of extra 7, of 7.46?
Let me, let me, let me explain on that.
One second, you're going to have to explain everything, not just with that one, uh, at last time, part of the, uh, part of the, the, the condition of the approval was, since he wasn't asking me any, any, any major variances at the time, we figured, you know what, if the, the zone criteria of that whole area, of all the houses in that area, why not, this last piece, we'll, we'll do it, so we didn't have to require any major front yard or rear yard setback, why not, you know, it's a regular thing. Here, I just want to know, on the testimony, why are we going from regular 36 front yard to 16.7, and is it the whole house or just the corner of the house, or is it just a deck or a stack or something? That's question number one, then I want to know why the rear yard, the rear yard, where it was normal last time, or whatever it was, 20, 25 feet, now it has to, for 11 feet, again, is it just one piece, one corner, or is it the majority of the back wall, with the deck? Or is it just the deck? Uh, and then, the rest?
He didn't ask for a variance.
So is this now a variance of extra 7, of 7.46?
Let me, let me, let me explain on that.
One second, you're gonna have to explain everything, not just with that one. Uh, last time, part of the, part of the, the, the condition of the approval was, since he wasn't asking me any, any, any major variances at the time, we figured, you know what, if the zone criteria of that whole area, of all the houses in that area, why not, this last piece, we'll, we'll do it. So we didn't have to require any major front yard or rear yard setbacks, why not? You know, it's a regular thing. Here, I just want to know, on the testimony, why are we going from regular 30 to front yard to 16.7? And is it the whole house or just the corner of the house? Or is it just a deck or a steps or something? That's question number one. Then I want to know why the rear yard, the rear yard, where it was normal last time, or whatever it was, 20, 25 feet, now it has to, or 11 feet, again, is it just one piece, one corner, or is it the majority of the back wall, with the deck? Or is it just the deck? Uh, and then the rest?
Okay, if, let me, let me finish my introduction, and then we will call for Brian to be sworn. Yes, absolutely, they were all part of our testimony.
I'm sure it was.
Okay, and just, I also note that since this is a spot lot, the applicant sent buy-sell letters to each of its two neighbors. There are only two property owners that own property adjacent to this one. One is the township of Lakewood, we didn't get a response. We had hoped the township would want to sell us property, but we didn't get so lucky, they didn't respond. The other is suburban agency, which is a Krupnik entity. We secured a deal with Mr. Krupnik, and we've actually already closed and obtained title to adjacent...
Just, just so it's understood, the, under application form, there's a blank spot for any previous applications being submitted, can't have slipped one, as opposed to the resolution of the next?
I didn't file, I didn't file the application, so I can't even comment. I didn't file it. Um, so Block 258, Lot 4, we've actually already clo- we've actually already closed on, we've acquired title. This application isn't changing on account of that, but the applicant will agree to consolidate that lot into this one, which will make this lot 4,000 square feet larger, and will actually lessen the variances for lot area, as well as lot coverage.
Oh, okay, so then let's, let's, let's go over it.
Exactly, so I said, let me finish my introduction. Since the township won't sell us any land, there is no way the applicant can make this lot any more conforming, though he did try to make it so. We did, in fact, send letters to, like I said, to both neighbors, asking them if they want to buy our property, or in the alternative, if they would sell us a piece of theirs. Mr. Krupnik conceded, the township did not respond to us, which I guess means they don't want to do either. Um, no new legal notices were required as a result of our acquisition of this parcel. Um, finally, I just would like to make clear for the board that this is a C2 variance, and that the standard that we need to meet in order for you to grant this variance is that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, and the benefit outweighs any detriment to the public good. There is no need for us to prove a hardship of any sort, um, we also do not need a super majority, we simply need a vote of a majority of the board. Um, at this point, I'm gonna ask to have Brian Flannery sworn.
Flannery, you can raise your right hand if you're square or if you're...
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, as Miriam has indicated, this is a isolated lot, uh, it's in the CLP zone, um, it's a buildable piece of property on an improved road. I have two exhibits marked. A1 is a copy of the tax map, uh, showing in orange the, uh, piece of property that was the subject of the application three years ago. Uh, in addition, highlighted in yellow and surrounded in red, is Mr. Krupnik's property that was acquired and added to this, that takes it from an 11,000 square foot lot to a 15,900 square foot lot. Um, the, uh, A2 is the map that was submitted, I turned it upside down, so it's headed north, and, and it lines up with the, uh, the tax map. Um, as Miriam has indicated, previously, this lot, the developer, uh, came in for an application, the board, based on some compelling testimony, uh, granted variances for the existing lot to be used, basically in accordance with R12 criteria, which is what the development around here is. Uh, A1 shows in blue the CLP line and the R12 line, and you can see that everything to the south is gonna be squirrels and deer, uh, and everything to the north is R12. Uh, it's at the end of the paved street, uh, first avenue comes down from Lafayette Boulevard, uh, and then turns on to Cedar, uh, and, uh, that accesses the two lots to the north, which were developed, uh, by the prior owner, uh, and the, and the pavement end. So this is on an improved street, it's a lot that is approved for a house, the difference this evening is we have an end user, uh, the Feigman's are here, and they want to build a, a house to retire in. I should point out, the original application did not limit basements, this application, if the board looked closely, there's no basement. So instead of having two families here, there'll be only one. When you look at the new relief that we're asking for, we've reduced the relief on the area by bumping it up an additional 4,800 square feet. Uh, the, uh, front setback, instead of having a, a house across the 30, you can see it, it jogs in and out, and it'll be, it'll look very nice, it'll be something that, uh, if the board acts favorably, I think, uh, everybody that goes by will, will see a nice house and, and say the, the zoning board did a good thing again. The only, the people that are gonna see it are the two people that live across the street, and they've both been given notices. Uh, I, I doubt that you would hear anybody object to this, because when you look at the house that's proposed, the 16.7, 16, yeah, .7 feet is to the porch, that's the closest point. Uh, each time the jogs come in, they come in to 30 feet, but then they go out again, so it's a, it's an aggregate somewhere between 30 and 16.7 to the porch at the closest point. Uh, the, the chairman also indicated he wanted to hear why you would give relief for the rear, and again, we have no basement here, so, uh, the, they want to have their, their living space, and, and I understand that, because I'm not as young as I used to be either. Uh, they, they want to have it, uh, you know, where they don't have to go down to the basement, and, and to do that, uh, they've pushed the house a little to the front, a little to the back, but if you look at A1, there's nothing behind them, the squirrels and the deer aren't gonna complain. Uh, they're, they're, they're probably gonna eat their, uh, all their, their landscaping, uh, because they're, they're going wild now. People who used to hunt in that Crystal Lake Preserve, nobody hunts there anymore, so now the deer, uh, just have their way with everybody's landscaping. Uh, the, the same thing on the sides, it was approved for a 25-foot wide aggregate, and now we're talking for, uh, the request is for a 22.38. And, and the reason for these numbers is they've sat down with an architect, they've designed the rooms and the house that they want to spend the rest of their life in, close to their family, uh, and, and, and that's the number that comes out. 22.38 versus 25 is de minimis, uh, by, in my opinion, and I, and I would think the board would, would agree with that. The only thing that anybody's gonna see different is the front setback, and it's my opinion that this front setback is gonna look beautiful, and it's something that clearly the benefits outweigh the detriments.
Flannery, with the, with the new, new lot purchased from suburban agency, that's sort of the rear of this lot?
If you look on A1, it's in the, uh, it's, looking from the road, it would be on the front, uh, right of it. Uh, geographic, geographically, it would be the northwest side of it.
I'm looking at the variance plot plan, this is Lot 4, right corner?
The one that we acquired?
I, I, I turned my map upside down, so it's north-south, consistent with, uh, the tax map, and, and Lot 4 is over here.
So, so are we eliminating any variances or are we adding Lot 4?
Uh, we don't eliminate a variance because it's in the CLP, which requires...
I know that, but the side yard of 12.38, or...
Does that help?
Uh, we're not...
You're combined?
We're not, we're not elim- eliminating it, but we're diminishing the variance.
Right, so what is the number now?
I'm confused.
Uh, what is your side yard combined now?
Hold on, just a moment. On the variance plot, the rear is open, we have two Lots 4 and a joint one.
Right, if, that's what I wanted to tell you, it's Block 258, Lot 4. Got it?
All right, now I'm saying why.
So it's immediately less than...
Uh... Yes.
Yes, that's the one we've acquired. The, like I said, all the other ones are owned by the township, we'd love to acquire them, we can't.
And, and the, the last item that you referred to was the, uh, building coverage. The building coverage permitted in the CLP is 10%. The prior application, you granted 30%. Uh, with the addition of Mr. Krupnik's lot, we're at 27%. So we're less than what it would be for an R12, and, and less than what the board approved previously.
So you just said the magic number, last time you approved a house that had the 50 R12, because that was the house that enabled it to be...
Yes.
That part, I didn't remember.
Yes.
So that's why we gave him all the variances that we cited, which we gave to Mr. Parnes.
Yes, and, and...
Now, you go over and above outside the R12?
Well, we want to go outside the R12 with respect to the side setbacks, uh, and the combined, combined side setbacks. If you look at this lot, it's combined side setbacks to the Crystal Lake Preserve, and it's 22.38, which is de minimis. So I, I certainly hope that...
So that 22.38, uh, the one and a half feet, especially when you're adding the other sides, now you side yard combined, that was upgraded because you had that, that whole piece on the side?
Yeah, that's true.
Which is now...
Well, we, we could try to say that's part of our side, I, uh, you know, I'd be happy to make that argument if, if the board, but I, I was trying to go with common sense. I, I, I think the testimony for Mr. Parnes was compelling in that this is a lot that should be developed, and as a developer, he got R12 standards. This is a, an end user, who, uh, instead of putting in a house that has a basement, he wants to be...
So now that he has a house on the side, can we ship the house over to the rear?
No, because he, it doesn't go down the entire side.
Oh, it doesn't go down the side?
No.
I don't have it here, so I don't know.
Yes.
Look on the map.
If you look on A2, and I, I could bring it closer for you to see.
Yeah, I think you should. I, I, we'll bring it closer to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flannery, as a result of...
Oh, I got it. It's that little yellow piece.
Correct.
Chairman, all that gained by that lot is the total coverage.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean anything to any...
Well, it, well, it does, the lot, it affects the lot area and the lot coverage, it does not affect the bulk variances.
The, the total lot area now will be 15,900, is that right?
That is correct.
And what's the lot percentage of coverage now?
27%.
We lost the proof, 20?
30.
Approved 30.
You approve, so yes, you approved greater lot coverage the last time. As I said, by, by acquiring, by acquiring this piece, the main thing that we did was lessen the lot coverage variance.
Does the approval last three years ago, does that expire or anything?
No.
The approval for three years ago?
The, the Lakewood ordinance, uh, puts a 10-year, uh, expiration date on variance approvals.
Technically, variances don't... Under municipal land use law, variances don't expire unless they're, as long as there's no zone change. And I don't, it has not been a zone change.
So if, if I continue with my testimony, but I want to make sure the board understands what we're asking for that's different, is a de minimis side setback to the Crystal Lake Preserve, a rear setback to the Crystal Lake Preserve, again, it, it impacts...
What would it do with the deer from the back? You don't give them up, rear yard setback?
We're planting, we're planting landscaping that they're gonna eat. So the deer, the deer are, the deer are gonna be happy with that, believe me.
Deer.
They're coming from Brooklyn, they're very excited. They're, they're moving from Brooklyn, this is what they want, they want to live in the country, this is the country.
Yeah, I can, oh, it's a country home, it's a, yeah, country house.
So, uh, continuing with, with my testimony, uh, the, uh, the master plan of, uh, 2007, which, which I'm only gonna get to talk about for a little while longer, because they're, uh, doing a new one. Uh, on page 35 under housing, it indicates that there's been a tremendous residential growth in Lakewood in recent years, uh, and it concludes with, for all this growth, however, not all of Lakewood's housing needs are met. So we're, we're adding a housing opportunity here, and we're taking a, a house that could have been a, a house with a rentable basement, and it really talks about the more cars, we're putting a, a retirement couple in here that's gonna be minimal impact...
Retirement house, the seat for the other retirement house. And they have, like, in, in, in the octlets, a retirement home.
Uh... There's a reference in Terry's letter about only two parking spaces?
Well, the driveway in front of the garage only allows two parking spaces, I, I was gonna get there when I finished with my proofs. It's, there's also a garage, there's a parking space in the garage, and then further, uh, up the street by the front door, there's room for another car to park, and there's plenty of room, especially with the Krupnik property next door. If the board thinks we need more than the parking that's shown for this retirement house, uh, there's, there's plenty of room to add a couple more, uh, well, this is the kind of retirement house I would have.
Is the house service, is the house service...
You have it.
Yes.
Is the house service with sanitary silver and a warm table?
Yes, yes. So the, uh, same master plan of 2007 on page 56 indicates encourage growth and development in appropriate locations and consistent with established land uses.
Brian, you realize that tonight might be your last opportunity to use the...
I, I, I understand that, I understand that, and, well...
Use as much as you can, because tomorrow night is over.
Well, and, and also, I understand that the board knows what I'm gonna say, because you've been hearing this.
So now...
Next meeting, if the board, if the board adopts it, yes, you won't know what I'm gonna say, and you'll be surprised. The municipal land use law, NJAC 40,55D2, under the purposes of the act, A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. It's my testimony that, that this does that. E is promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. We could have had two families here, we're only having one. It's my testimony that, that it does that as well.
The population of the deer?
The, the deer population needs more hunters, and the Lakewood community's not turning out hunters. Uh, the, uh, this is a, 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 a C variance in the municipal land use law, uh, and at the prior, uh, application, which the testimony was compelling, and the board granted it, uh, we indicated the hardship of this lot. It's in a, uh, Crystal Lake Preserve, there's no ability to buy the land, as Miriam indicated, this time, we sent out letters, and, and this time, Mr. Krupnik was willing to sell, the township still wasn't. The township's not selling the Crystal Lake Preserve, they're not doing any development there, so there's nothing we can do in that, we definitely have a hardship on that. The app, variances that we're asking for tonight more fall into a C2 category, where the benefits outweigh the detriments. My testimony is that there is no detriment, the side setback is de minimis, the rear setback, nobody's gonna see, the front setback, I think the architecture that's there is more interesting than a straight house across the 30 feet, and, and it's my testimony that the board can grant these without any detriment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance, uh, and without any detriment to the public good. Uh, going, finishing on Terry's report, because I, I'd like to answer all of his questions, um, there, there was the question on the parking spaces, which I, I previously indicated, uh, we're showing four on the plan, including the one in the garage. If the board feels more needed, uh, there is room to add more parking spaces, especially because we have the Krupnik property. Uh, the third item under Terry on review comments was with respect to environmental constraints, uh, and, and my testimony three years ago, uh, is the same as it is now. If you look at the environmental, uh, information, uh, there's no, uh, environmental constraints, we're, we're away from the wetlands and streamcars, but certainly, any approval, we would have to give documentation to your engineer, uh, that, that there are no environmental concerns.
Okay, yeah, any comments, any comments, board members, I have them.
Yes, I have them. Quick question's over. Can you indicate a little bit more clearly, if we had, if we required you to put two more spaces in, where would they go?
We, we put them parallel to the road, when you come in this driveway, there'd be two parking spaces, uh, off the driveway coming to the front door.
It's a single car driveway?
It's a single car driveway to the front door, we could make it double, we could do side parking spaces, we have this whole, uh, 40 by 125-foot long area over there that we could do more parking. My testimony is you don't need it, the, uh, when they review the plot plans, uh, if they feel more parking is needed, or if your engineer feels more parking is needed, there is area to put more parking.
There's nobody living on that street.
Okay.
There's plenty of bike streets.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so, talking about parking spots, I was wondering, is there stairs?
Well, most everybody in Lakewood has stairs to their attic, but it's not gonna be finished in no bedroom.
It's not gonna be finished.
Unfinished attic with no bedroom?
Correct. It, it really is, that's why I was really hoping that Mr. Feigman would be here, he was here for the last meeting. Um, it's really a retirement home, he has a lot of children and grandchildren who come, who are gonna come to visit him, which is why this, you know, the house, as, as, as the chairman has been indicating, it's not a small house, um, but it's just for, it's just for when the kids come for Shabbos or for the holidays. But there's no attic bedrooms, there's no basement, there's nothing being hidden here, this is for an older couple who is really retiring to this house.
Yeah, one has done his retirement, this house, and so there's another family, attic, attic, it's not finished, and then there's not enough, and then there's not enough parking spots because...
You want four parking spaces, we'll put in the four parking spaces.
That's why I was asking.
No problem.
And looks from the plan, there's three, 28 acres. Another question I have, there, there's a cake machine going in between the two lots that we're discussing.
That was vacated.
It was, yeah, so I'd like to know, it was a vacated...
Yes.
It was vacated to...
Yes, that was vacated.
Yes, you, you can see the township consolidated all this area, it's all one big township lot.
So if this one gets approved, this is going to be one continuous lot?
Yes, we'll consolidate, we'll consolidate the two lots.
And, and would the resolution reflect that this is not going to become one lot?
Yes, yes it will.
It, I'm sorry, it will become one lot and block, it'll be consolidated into a single, yeah.
If I remember correctly, during that last year that we had, the township took out all the roads and they turned that all into one big road property, right?
Yes, yes.
The township property is 7, 4, something, you could...
Yeah, that's why, that's why we granted it last time, because there's no roads really in here, it's all really all vacated land, you can't just, you can't get anywhere. That was our base, why we, um, approved it, approved it, approved it last time. Uh, you know, all, all these internal roads, second, the second street or the drive, whatever, Cedar Drive, you can't go anywhere, you can't go anywhere, there's wetlands in there also, are there wetlands in there?
Well, there's a stream corridor that's off to the west of us, and the Crystal Lake is a little further down. There's actually a, a dirt road that I used to walk on all the time, that goes right behind their house, all the way down to Crystal Lake. It's, it's a very nice area for walking around, that's what the township's intent is, to leave it as a passive open space.
Right, and then, and that's what we wanted to bring last time, you know, the R12 criteria, because it's just, um, nothing.
Right.
Being granted, besides the here, if the kids want people, you can back into it.
Yep.
It's about an attack. Anyone else on board, want to say something? Seeing none, okay, so let me open to the public, fill in the 40, 39, on the public, you want to say, want to have anything to say, please step up, seeing none, okay, we close to the public. Um, sidewalks are going in on here, correct?
Correct.
We're gonna make sure that we don't miss that.
Certainly.
We don't miss that.
Curbs, you're just saying?
What?
Curbs too.
Curbs also were just sidewalks?
Carban sidewalk, sure, carban sidewalk.
And landscaping and irrigation and...
Listen, if he doesn't want to put any landscaping, it was a beautiful house.
Uh, we, we have to feed the deer.
And, and, and one-third of the front will be upgraded as well.
If you look at the architectural plan, it's more than that.
Yeah, yeah, in case you were nervous about that on this one.
Okay, can I have a motion? I'll make a motion with two extra parties. Okay, I just had a little bit of a problem with the 11 feet, but I'll let you guys, so, the front, the rear, I don't care, talking about the front setback, but you guys, it's only a porch, so I, you know, but, hope you guys can try and...
Yeah, we motion to approve, I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion from Woody Rose, um, my mayor, Gillum.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
And Alvin Sin?
Yes.
Sin, Rose?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, fill in number 40, 35, Marion Mansour.
Mr. Weinstein?
Cherry Street, Lot 189, Lot 129, Lot 30, Lot 31, Lot 34, Lot 01, Lot 33.02, 78.11, Lot 72, Lot 78, Lot 79, R10, subdivision to create five duplex on underside of lots. Cherry votes September 6, 2017, the applicant seeks minus subdivision, it's going to subdivide six existing lots, to create nine new residential lots. Eighty-four blocks to be designed, a zero after the stop, and four duplex structures. One single-family home, four on lots, Lot 30.01.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening once again, Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Iron Man Saur. Um, this client of mine is in Israel for Sukkot as well, I know it must be, must be something I have that all my clients went to Israel, uh, for this, these were all scheduled to be heard last month.
You went to Israel?
Um, Iron Man Saur is there as well, so, they left me here, everybody else is partying in Israel.
You can watch the light, come, come there.
Anyway, this application is to subdivide six existing lots along Cherry Street into a total of nine lots, upon which eight duplex units will be constructed in four buildings on zero lot line lots, and one single-family lot. In addition to that, you will note that there are two duplex buildings that are currently under construction, I think they're actually almost finished, on North Oakland Street, that we are adjusting the lot lines on to make this application work. Duplexes are permitted in the R10 zone, but only on lot sizes of 12,000 square feet or greater. greater. Since the lot sizes will be under 12,000 square feet per duplex, use variance approval is required. Now, this area is slated to be rezoned, R75 in the master plan, which hopefully will get passed tomorrow evening, but for now, this is certainly still R10. And again, the township committee still has to pass a new...
It might take one more month.
Well, they have to pass an ordinance even after the master plan is adopted, but should be aware of that. The single-family lot as well is going to be 9,000 square feet, and 10,000 square feet would be required. Again, it's greater than the R75 standards, which hopefully will be the 2017 master plan. This area is certainly in need of redevelopment. There have even been some incidences in this area recently, some not such pleasant things have taken place in this area, and certainly, redeveloping this area is really a must. This project is also going to enable the developer to bring sewer to Cherry Street, which is needed as well. At this point, I'd ask to have Brian Flannery sworn.
Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm the whole truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. As Miriam has indicated, this is an application to take a property that currently has two duplexes under construction on North Oakland and combine it with some property on Cherry Street to come up with a total for the entire project of four duplex structures with eight units and a single-family. I have three exhibits marked. A1 is the tax map of the area showing other development in the area. A2 shows the existing conditions, and it shows along North Oakland, there's two duplexes under construction, and there's a property on Cherry Street that's got two dwellings built on it. A3 is the map that was submitted, showing how it's being chopped up, where some of the excess area from North Oakland is being taken and put in with the Cherry Street. The North Oakland lots would be 10,000 square foot lots, consistent with the R75 and all of the other development in the area. If you look at A1, I've marked in oranges the subject property. In pink is the property that we don't talk about, where there's duplexes on very small lots. Blue are the properties that have duplexes that have been approved by this board in accordance with the 2007 master plan, and green are other duplexes that are under construction. So, it's an area that's redeveloping very nicely. We all know that the 2007 master plan recommended this to go to R75. Because of the plan endorsement process, the town dragged their feet, and nobody twisted their arm enough to make this change. The current master plan, this area was brought up again, and Mr. Franklin, who lives in the area, was a very strong supporter of changing this to R75, so that the area redevelops in accordance with the R75, which is predominantly what it is.
Flannery, the lots in blue, which have duplexes on them, approximately what's the size of those lots compared to this?
Well, the... Most of them are 10,000 and a little more. There's two of them that are what I would refer to as close to 10,000, but 9,000 and change. So, there are a couple that have been approved at less than 10,000. I think the board looked at the applications in the past, and if it was virtually a 10,000 square foot lot and it made sense, and that's what we're asking for this evening. The way we've divided this, we made the single-family larger than an R10 lot would be, and the reason we did that is because of the properties that it's next to. You can see, we have two what'll be conforming duplexes on North Oakland. On Cherry Street, we're going to have two which range an area from 9,500 to 10,000 square... 95, 93 square feet to 10,000, and then the single-family is in a 9,000 square foot lot. If you looked at the combined area...
So, what is the lots number of the lots on North Oakland, which will have, they're supposed to have, they're supposed to be 12,000 persons?
Well, we're here because it's a use variance, and the case that I'm making is these are virtually R75-type lots in accordance with what the master plan recommended.
No, I understand, but you're saying they're conforming, they're not...
Well, I said they would be conforming to the R75. So, they're 10,000 square foot lots, conforming to the area and conforming to... Would be conforming to the R75, but obviously, it's a R10 zone today, which requires 12,000 square feet.
But you realize it's not conforming because it's not 10,000 square feet.
I understand that, and it's very similar to further up Cherry Street, the big blue one that... Lots, 128, 180, and 181 was a very similar application, where 9,700 square foot lots were done. The lots on the corner were each under 10,000 square feet. 98, 9900 square feet. So...
But not 95?
Well, when you look at the 95, if we took some out of the single-family, we could make them bigger. My testimony is that that doesn't make sense. The single-family is at 9,000 square feet. If we said, okay, we're going to do R10, we'll make that 7,500 square feet. We'll take that 1,500 and put it into the other two, but it doesn't make sense. This is what looks better. As you're driving down Cherry Street, it's going to be similar to the other ones that are approved down the street. The width, the size, everything about it, nobody's really going to notice the 400...
Let me ask you a question. See that little piece that counted in the single-family lot?
Yes.
Right at the back. You could take that property on, right? And cut it, yeah, cut it straight up. Up. Up Cherry Street.
Up till here?
Yeah. Then you eliminate that little piece over there, and everything fits right into place. Yep. What's that little piece in there? How many square feet are you adding to the 9,000? Like that you...
...next to... And that's why we're trying to come back with that. This is why it's a single 4,000 square feet. They gave the 3,200 there.
Doesn't look the same.
No, because he's not going to be able to... I don't think he's done the size of 4,000 square feet.
Again, just straighten it out.
I don't want to... Yeah, they're not going to...
You know, we're talking 10,000 to 98, which is the minimum.
Well, that's...
96, which is even the minimum.
How big is that? Brian?
95, which is the minimum, or the 96.
How big is that strip?
So, we're going to be at 8,000, which is the minimum. Again, that paint block will be one whole.
And then we'd have more nice housing for families, but I can see that's not where you want to go. That strip is about 11 feet wide, so 11 by 100, it would be 1,000 square feet. If we add that on, we'd make them, if not exactly 10,000 each, certainly close enough.
What's that going to be?
You're making me...
Making them work.
Yeah.
So, one second. The single-family lot would then be 8,000 square feet?
Well, we'd be taking...
Taking 1,100 or 1,500?
1,100. So, it would be 79.
Actually, it's a little further, because we got the piece in the back.
Right.
Right. That's what I'm talking about.
So, let's... I thought everybody was in a hurry to get home, but we'll take the time.
Why don't you get her any keys? Now, while you figure that out, I remember when we did the other approvals on the other side, that was on condition, because we were able to substantially widen Cherry Street to make that into 55 foot right of way.
Yes, and we're going to do the same thing, give a road widening easement, so that...
So, by adding this piece over here, it'll more or less widen the whole Cherry Street besides those two spats, those two lots? Can we create three lots?
Yes.
So, Cherry Street now will become a total of 50 foot right of way, because I don't know what's on the other side. I know, it's 34, but then we're adding the, on their side, and the other side's just added, you know, so... But your calculations after road widening easement, right? Brian?
No, we did our calculations the same as everybody else has done, including the area of the road widening easement in the lot.
Right. So, you took out the road widening easement, and then you add 10,000 square feet after you dedicate the...
No.
No.
No. So, you have smaller lots.
Well, we did it the same as the other ones were done on that street, and typically, at the planning board, if we were doing an application, we would give the area prior to the dedication or easement. If it's a dedication, it comes out. Easements, and that's why easements have been done in this area.
Mr. Chairman, often you take out the road.
Well, with the little piece added, with the little piece added, we would be at 9,928 square feet each, which I would call 10,000. And it sounds like a very good suggestion by the chairman.
So, Mr. Flannery, are we talking about taking a little slipper off the bottom, not extending it to Cherry Street?
No, I think we are.
Just a little tail there, that's the only thing?
No.
No, extending it all the way.
We would take...
All the way up.
All the way up.
We would take the northerly jog, we would take that all the way up, so that would add the little tail plus roughly an 11-foot strip all the way up.
So, what happens to the single-family lot?
The single-family lot loses...
That piece. No, more, I think.
Close to 1,400 square feet, so the single-family lot comes closer to 7,500 square feet.
So, that variance for the single family?
Yes.
Correct.
Now, the setback second floor is going to remain the same?
Yes, yes.
So, you shrink the house?
Yes, we'll shrink the house.
So, with the approximate 1,400 square feet, we added only to lot 13002?
No.
No, we would shuffle it between the four of them.
The four, okay.
So, then each duplex lot becomes 9,900 square feet. So, it looks something more to the R10, R75, R10, Percheria, which is trying to accomplish.
Mr. Chairman, if you could go through that thought process, why didn't you put it on the duplex?
Yes.
At the same...
And then you add 7,500.
Yeah, but it needs 10,000.
Don't give us any good ideas.
My initial thought was it should be a duplex, but...
The lots which are on North Oakland, those lots will be less steep as a result of this?
No, no. No, it doesn't affect them at all.
No, those are all...
They're not affected.
All the... Brian, you mentioned...
That strip...
Did you just show it? How deep is that?
That strip, Jerry, doesn't affect the lots of North Oakland?
No, I understand that. But right now, looking at the rear lines of the North Oakland lots, right now, they are 133 plus 36 feet, and now you're going to cut this part off and make it the lot, correct?
No, the 36 was part of the single-family lot.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. Look, you have a minor subdivision. Right now, as we speak, these lots are...
Oh, yes, we're taking that off them and making them the 10,000 square foot lot.
So, the lots which are now under construction...
Yes.
Will become shorter.
Correct.
Are those lots now under contract somewhere? And if so, does the buyer know he's going to have a shorter lot?
Yes, yes.
One second.
The lots that are, where it says duplex development under construction right here?
Yes.
Those lots are currently under contract. The buyers were made aware at the outset when they signed contracts.
I believe it was myself.
Right now, these lots on North Oakland, part of the subdivision application takes this much of the... So, these lots now will be only... These lots will be 133 feet. They were...
They were till here.
Yeah.
So, now, these lots are going to be from here to here, right?
Yeah.
What he's taking is now, which is from here to here, right? Right?
No, 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 no.
One second, one second. This is now, this is the under construction lots.
Yes.
It's going to be this blue square that...
Good enough. It's good for the house.
Yeah, 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 right. Right over here.
Yeah.
Okay. So, what he's doing is this piece, this lot line, is moving over to here, and this is going over here, and that's it. So, yeah, so these backyard, which is both from Oakland, is not being attached to Cherry Street.
No, it was attached. It's going to be short.
This is going to become short. This is going to become, the lot line's going to come here instead of here.
So, these lots are now with the construction?
Right, but that's correct. But this is the initial application wants, that he's taking this away.
I want to make sure that the contract purchasers know they're getting 30 less.
Yes, they do. They were made aware of it in the contract from the outset, that there was a possibility that the developer was going to do a further subdivision and take that off.
So, the contract purchasers of the four lots know that they're going to lose 33 feet from what was originally there?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
How does that... How do we know that?
Because it's in the contracts.
It is written in the contract? It's entered? You have...
The applicant's saying it is. I'm not their attorney on those contracts, but I had other contracts where I actually represented purchases.
Maybe we'll hear from the applicant.
We'll hear from the applicant directly. Sure.
I want to be assured...
Yeah.
That there is a writing, that these...
I'll call the applicant as a witness. Would you like me to do that now?
Yes. Right here.
Right here. As opposed to here, they're losing 30 feet.
Who's speaking here?
Right now, this is...
Is it in there?
And maybe that's okay, since it's wire or not.
The... On both these duplex, we have decks.
Can... Let me call one of the... Let me call one of the members of the applicant.
I'll answer the question further. If they have decks, are we creating a rear yard setback with the deck?
We've got one, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear?
Affirm.
What they're doing?
Just a moment. Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and help the guy?
Yes.
And would you give us your full name and spell your last?
Elazar Wax. E-L-A...
Speak into the mic, please.
E-L-A-Z-A-R.
If you could lift it up for me.
W.A.C.H.S.
W.A.
C.H.S.
Thank you.
Mr. Wax, if you could, I'm sorry, if you could just tell the board what your relationship is to the applicant. Do you own property as part of this development?
Yes.
And- I just asked him what his relationship was to the applicant.
What did, what did you say his last name was?
Wax, W.A.C.H.S. His first name is-
I thought it was, okay, got it.
Got it? And his first name is Elazar, E.L.A.Z.A.R. and-
Okay, I apologize.
Okay, Mr. Wax, again, if you could just repeat for the, for the board what, what your interest is in this property, just so they know that you're the applicant or related to him.
I have a partnership in the lots.
Thank you, and you're, are you familiar with the contracts for these lot, for these four lots that were sold on North Oakland?
Yes, I am.
And are all, are all four of the lots currently under contract to be sold?
Yes.
And in each of those contracts, you specified, or your attorney specified, that there was a possibility that there would be a further subdivision of these properties and that they might lose this portion at the rear of the lot as was currently shown on the subdivision map, correct?
Yes, clearly was said that we're going to be taking off a piece, and we said exactly the amount. It was written by the attorney, and, and they went and have reviewed, knowing that there will be a piece take, being taken off, exactly the amount which you see over here.
So you gave in the contract, you specified the exact dimensions that would be subdivided off of those lots?
Yes.
Mr. Wax, are you part of Success Home Capital?
No.
That's-
Well, who won?
Yes, yes, that's, yes, that's Mr. Mazaraki, yes. Yes.
You are part of Success Home Capital?
Yes.
And Success Home Capital is building duplexes on, on North Oakland?
Yes.
And who is the attorney who prepared the contract for you?
Mr. Kunzlinger.
Not Talley Kunzlinger.
Well, what I'd like is, assuming that the board is going to approve the application, I'd like something from your attorney. No disrespect to you, but we need something in writing from your attorney confirming that these four people know they're going to get less of a lot than they do now.
Can I represent this board?
I'll give you my business ad, my, my business card, you can ask an attorney to call me.
Thank you, thank you.
No, Mr. Mr.- Mazaraki's doing the building, I'm sorry. Mr. Gally, this is, this is done pretty frequently. I represent buyers, actually not on this one, but there was that other project further down Cherry Street where they did the same thing. And they did make it a stipulation in the contract, it was there from the beginning during the attorney review process, that the developer let the buyers know that they had, they had planned on filing an application to subdivide off the piece at the rear of the property to enable them- Well, they didn't, that's what, they just, they just want to sell them before they have the subsequent approval.
They're the contract purchasers of these properties and they're not even one of the applicants. They should be, they should be applying for the lot.
They're not, well, they're not the current, they're not the current owner. The current owner is-
They're the contract purchasers of the lots, they have an equitable interest in the, in the application. It's their lots which are going to be affected.
The application was already in before they purchased it, they saw the exact plans, and, and they went into contract after the application was in already. They haven't, they have no interest, they have no interest for this to happen. They, they have zero interest that this should be approved.
What does it say on the contract of, of the length of the property? Does it say 133 feet or does it say 133?
I believe 133, I believe.
It says 133?
Yes.
So you only sold them in the contract, the 133 feet of it?
Yes.
And if this application wouldn't have passed, that part of this would have been?
Then they would be getting a present, as a, as a, without, this is an unexpected, unexpected, if you want, I could try pulling up a contract, my email.
As a condition of approval.
I don't have an issue if you want to go forward with this, understanding that I'll hear from the attorney, as a condition of any approval, I'll hear from the attorney to prepare these contracts and provide some proof that the four buyers know what's going on and agree with.
Well, Mr. Gally, if I may, this, this application has been carried several times because the board didn't reach it. Those houses are just about finished, and there, those houses on, on North Oakland are going to have COs probably prior to the next scheduled meeting, which is the reason that we're asking that it be done now. If, if, if I could ask, as a condition of approval, that we'll produce copies of the contracts, I will reach out to Mr. Kunzlinger myself, I will get copies of those contracts, and I'd have to produce them to Mr. Dasty to his satisfaction.
Mr. Wax, when did you sign the contract with these four lots?
You remember?
About?
It was about, I would say, max three months ago, so I would guess.
Three months ago, that was?
This is by the engineer ready, this is by the engineer ready for at least eight, nine months. This must have been by the engineer preparing the plans for the-
When did you submit the application to this board?
Many months ago, I don't know exactly, it was pushed over a few times.
Grant, can you see that, because you watch the term that- June 13th. So the contracts were signed, it was June 13th, three months ago. I mean, you affirmed that the contracts were signed after the application was signed, but dates don't seem to change.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know the exact dates. One thing I can say for sure, the plans were fully ready and they saw the exact pot plan of the, the exact way that's going to be sliced of, the property now is 75 by 1, by 169, I believe. We show them clearly it's going to be a 75 by 133 divided in two.
I can't hear that.
All these plans are, they're stamped, all this 33.
That was after the technical hearing, the ready. They were, they were redrawn after the technical hearing.
Want to vote to adjutant and not vote until you feel satisfied next month, the mayor, you should feel satisfied, but make sure that, that it's not all over the board by, by the showing.
It's going, this is going to cost me, I'm sorry, can I, can I ask something?
Yes. The sale price was predicated upon 133 feet, and if you did take it, then you'd get 167 for the same price?
Yes, because we were so convinced the board approved down the block, the exact same thing a few months ago. We, we were so convinced, we told the buyers, the board approved, we showed the buyers exactly what the board approved, and we said, most likely, we're hoping that the board's going to approve this, so we're ready to take the risk, we're ready to take the shot, we told the buyers. Instead of mixing them up, two different prices and negotiating, we said, you know what, we'll give you a present, if it doesn't get approved, you get, you gain extra land. But we, we, we told, we told them, most likely, we will get it approved, we, we, we're, we're ready to put in hundreds of thousands of dollars into Cherry Street. That right now, the garbage trucks have to back up into, into, onto the 88, it's, it's not doable. My wife tells me today she waited five minutes waiting for the garbage truck to back up. It's not safe, the buses, we're ready to do all this, making, widening, and, and we're just begging the board, please, to be understanding, and, and it's costing us a lot, make it, make it, you know, doable according to what you did already in the past.
I don't have an issue with, if you wanted to follow your suggestion, hearing all the testimony, listening to the public, and then waiting to vote until we get sure-
Before you do that, I want to make sure that my fellow board members are-
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if I can just, I, I do have personal knowledge, the other application that he's referring to up the block on Cherry Street, which I was not involved in, but I, I represented one of the purchasers of one of the lots of North Oakland on that project. And that contract, it was very clearly put in during the attorney review process.
The exact same, the same-
It was the, it was the exact same scenario. They were working with Ms. Construction, Ms. Construction was the builder.
But that's not this.
I'm sure they put this, it was the same seller's attorney.
I'll tell you the truth, that's why Cherry feels very confident in moving forward with it.
Right.
But nevertheless, it's still not this, which you need to see the proof on this.
If I, if I may, if I could just ask that that be just a condition of the approval, we will produce the contracts, I'll get them tomorrow from Mr. Kunzlinger. I just, like I said, because I don't have personal involvement, I don't represent Ms.
Like I said, if, if my fellow board members would like to, fellow, I'll be okay with it.
I also do want to address one-
They want to wait for the vote?
Understood. Understood, I just want to make one more, I think Mr. Gally asked earlier why there's Ms. Construction, Iron Mansour. Just so you understand, the duplexes on North Oakland are being built by Ms. Construction. The new duplexes that are going to be constructed on Cherry Street are going to be constructed by Iron Mansour and by, by his, by, by Arm Construction, so-
Why is Success Homes, how are they involved in it?
They own the properties, they own these properties.
They're, they're the landowner.
And, and the names?
They're the landlord of all four duplexes? Success Homes sold, sold ones on Oakland?
Yes.
And Success Home is not selling the ones on Cherry Street?
They're not selling until it's approved, we can't- Yes, now, every, every, yes, one's North Oak-
Success Home is selling the one on Cherry Street to Iron Mansour?
Yes.
Okay, now, Ms. Construction is only doing the-
The front, North Oakland.
Or is she part of Success? You don't do the construction part of it?
Yeah, he's only doing, he's only doing, Ms. is only doing the front of North Oakland, the back has nothing to do with him. And, and in the deal, nothing that has to do with you, I'm sorry that I'm bothering you, but it's pushed off many, many months, and, and every month, once it's completed, it's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars. Having two, four units up, each one is, is worth 650, times four, it's, it's, it's a couple of million dollars sitting-
Hold on, Mr. Wax, nobody told you to build these houses when they approved?
You're right.
Okay, so let's go back a little.
You're right.
Just help me out. Who owns now the lots on North Oakland?
Successful LLC.
Success Homes Capital.
And who owns lots on Cherry Street?
The Cherry Street lots are owned, is owned, is owned by, by someone, Frankel. Frankel, Mr. Frankel, and-
All right, so, so-
Harold Frankel, and, and I'm in contract on one of them.
By, by you, who, who is in contract on the ones on Cherry Street?
I'm in contract on both of them. I'm, me personally, I'm, I'm, I'm in contract on the ones on Cherry Street.
All right, but Success Homes owns the ones on-
North Oakland, yes.
And are you testifying that you are part of Success Home Capital?
Yes, I'm part as, as a, as a silent partner.
Are you, it, it says here the Success Home Capital LLC is the owner. Do you own any of that LLC?
I don't own personally, my, I'm a, I am a partner.
That, that, stop. You're either a partner or you're not a partner.
Okay, so I guess I'm not.
So then why, how can you draw for Success Homes LLC? You don't own any of it, right? About that one, correct?
No, right, correct.
Before, you affirmed that you did own it.
I said I'm a partner. I'm sorry, I apologize.
When I asked you if you owned part of Success Home Capital, you affirmed that you do.
Uh-
Someone ought to explain to you that if you're a partner, you ought to-
Let's, Mr. Mr. Wax, you're, you're not, are you a member? Are you a member?
You'll be able to testify when you're a partner.
I think, I think it was mistaken, I know, hold on, Jerry, hold on. Are you, so you're not a member of Success Homes Capital LLC?
No.
But you have an interest in that project because you're supposed to be purchasing the rear portion of the North Oakland property, is that correct?
Yes.
So that, is that what you meant when you said that you were a partner in the property?
Yes, I apologize for misunderstanding. I had a misunderstanding.
All right, let's all start over again. Mr. Who owns now the lots on Cherry Street?
There's one lot owned by Harold Frankel and one lot I'm in contract on.
And are you the, are you personally the contract purchaser of the lots on Cherry Street?
Yes.
All right, I'd like you to give to Ms. Weinstine a copy of that contract, she can redact the purchase price and all that, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Okay, so, so Elazar Wax is the contract purchaser of the lots on Cherry Street?
Yes.
Well, why didn't you fill out the application that way? Why didn't you say that?
I'm sorry.
Jerry, Jerry, I think they made it simpler, they filed it under Iron Mansour because he's going to be the developer. It was a mistake, clearly, and I didn't prepare the application, that the engineer did, engineer's office did.
I thought this gentleman was going to be the developer.
No.
But why, how-
Arm Construction, he's the, he's a, he owned, he's a contract purchaser of the mother lot.
Of the lots on Cherry?
Yes. And then he's not a builder himself, so he retained Arm Construction, and they put the application under Iron Mansour, who's a proprietor of Arm Construction.
All right, the applica, the, the application you submitted to Ms. Segal says the applicant is Arum Mansour.
Right.
What does he, what is he the contract purchaser of?
He's not, is he a contract purchaser of any of the lots, Mr. Wax? Or just, or just the builder?
He's going to be a builder, maybe a partner.
He's-
Now, let, let this gentleman affirm under oath-
Sure.
What the story is, because I'm trying to get this straight now.
Sure.
Don't get me mad, let's get it straight.
I'm sorry.
What is Mr. Mansour the contract purchaser of?
Mr. Mansour is going to be the builder of the project.
So why is he an applicant to this property, he's just a builder, right?
I guess, I-
Why didn't you put your name on the application, sir?
I didn't either own anything, so if I, I, I thought it has to do, anyone who wants could put an application, I didn't, I didn't-
Actually, I put my name on it. So, Mr. Mansour is just a builder, he has nothing to do with this, correct?
Correct.
And the lots are owned by Mr. Frankel on Cherry Street?
One, one lot by Mr. Frankel, and one lot, I forgot the guy's name, but I'm in contract.
So you are in contract with both of those owners that buy the lots on Cherry Street?
Yes.
You person?
Me.
Now, let's try the ones on North Oakland. Who, who owns the ones on North Oakland now?
Success Homes Capital.
Successful Capital.
I'm sorry?
Success Homes Capital.
Succ, I forgot the name of LLC.
It's Success Homes Capital LLC.
Who's the, who's the proprietor of it?
So what's going to happen, who's going to, so Success Home Capital is the owner of the lots on North Oakland, correct? I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, correct.
And you have nothing to do with that property, that ownership?
He, he, well, he doesn't have anything to do with Success, okay?
Now, let him testify.
Let him testify.
You don't have any ownership interest in Success Homes Capital, do you? Do you own any of it?
I do have interest, yes.
Can I, can I, can I, can I ask the witness a question?
No, he's a big shot businessman.
Can I, can I just ask the witness a question? I don't think he understands the question, I just, I just want to assist him, Jerry.
Do you own any of the LLCs? Okay, how hard is it?
I don't, I don't, I'm not a member, no.
You have a contract to purchase the 30 feet at the rear of the property.
He says he owns nothing of the LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
So then why can you testify or affirm on behalf of Success Home Capital? How do you do that?
I, I didn't mean to testify on their behalf, I was involved in the contracts. I, I myself knew every contract that went out, and I, and that's how I was testifying, that I'm aware and I know that every single contract signed by Successful Homes LLC was given over to each buyer of the four buyers on North Oakland.
Is Mr. Shmuel Schwartz here today? S.H.M.U.E.L., I apologize if I'm mispronouncing, Schwartz, is he here? Do you know who that is?
Schmo or Moshe?
Do you know who that is, sir? No? You don't know who that is?
Moshe Schwartz?
It says S.H.M.U.E.L. Schwartz, who resides at 119 East Fourth Street, do you know who that is?
No idea.
You know, no idea? Well, that man signed an affidavit saying he owns Success Homes Capital, and he also signed an affidavit saying Success Home Capital owns all of the lots. Not Mr. Frankel, anybody else, they own all, that's not true as far as you know, is it? All right, my suggestion is that this application needs to be revised and corrected, and we note- Is no one here on behalf of the app, no?
After we pull out this affidavit, Shmuel Schwartz is owning the whole property, the whole corner, but also big market, the whole thing. Who's Shmuel Schwartz to sign the application?
Who is it?
We can, we can, I'm told we can, we can get Schmo Schwartz to come down. We can get Schmo Schwartz to come down. Okay.
Sorry.
Let's find, let's tell the truth on the application, though. Let's make sure when we sign affidavits under oath-
Can we carry it to November 13th?
And let's make sure that people who testified, Ms. Weinstine, let's make sure of Ms. Weinstine, people who testified have some interest, ownership interest in what they're talking about.
Understood.
And can represent things on behalf of the application, which this man cannot do.
Understood. Can we, can-
And I don't want to hear about silent partners, we have enough of that below.
I, I don't think we can continue this application for freedom of, where your lawyers are on this application.
Can we, can we carry it, can we carry it to November 13th?
No, 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 new application, correct the forms, new application and new notice. These forms are grossly wrong. You put on there an applicant who isn't an applicant, you put on there that Success Homes owns all the lots, apparently that's untrue, this gentleman is telling the truth now. So let's try it again, let's put a new application in, let's see where we get the unadjudged.
Okay, so I just wanted, I think, to ensure that the application will be withdrawn, do we need a motion to withdraw the application?
Uh, I don't know, are you withdrawing the application?
We are, we are.
He's not letting you, he's not letting you. The wrong applicant.
Are you withdrawing?
Yes, we'll withdraw the application without prejudice.
All right, then you should vote to accept the withdrawal of the application.
Make a motion to accept it.
Yes.
Yes. We'll be taking a time break, we'll come back, we'll- What do you like? Oh, okay. That's my copy, where are the others? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have to, we have to sign a request. Right. It doesn't count, it's not a request, go straight, hold this line. Maybe by hand, it's not, you know, give me the pass. Uh, I mean-
Does it matter? Yeah. The app's-
So we're not going to, so we're not going to sell.
The app's changed, the capital has changed. The applicant has been, has been, has been- Well, then- He's done here, right? I listen to the app, but I think he's okay. If he, if he, if the app's done, then it's great. Very correct. This gentleman is the oldest one, since you were a boss in my office. Well, if someone, oh, I think that this man here right now is pretty good. Hi, sir. How can you be a partner to the chief of business of a loss? I just, I'm gonna be here. No, no, I, I let you throw up. No, are you, I, I-
Get me out of here, I'm tired. I'm having fun. Oh, it's been fun. You think we're gonna get hurt or? I'm not gonna get hurt. I know, so we'll go to town, right?
Yeah.
Well, we shouldn't have as much excitement.
It's funny, it's exciting, I'm gonna stay.
The excitement's over. That just kept going.
Congratulations, Adam.
You coming over, are you still sitting there?
What?
Oh, you are, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna get up and answer. The first name is Cutter, is it?
How can they help? What the last name?
Okay.
How can I help? What about you?
Maybe, maybe I can-
Well, actually, I'm-
Yeah, I wanna see your passport. Yeah, thank you.
But, 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 but that's ridiculous.
Why didn't I, why didn't we pick up that? He said, he's alright. He's already listed up. And you should be more-
I have similar things.
Alright.
Very good.
Don't got a bucket there. You're impressed? No? You, you're, you're, you don't know where it's at.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be watched, you know, because I gotta go like that. My friend, I'm very rough.
Well, I got myself one against this.
We're going to all 40, 30.
Yeah, we did it first.
Who's sitting here?
Hi. Hi, how does that work?
I don't know, maybe he doesn't have a turn.
I'm adjourning mine, I'm carrying mine. Because he's not gonna reach? No, Cloverst- Cloverstree, Cloverstree. Last one. Mr. Chairman, Michael J. Gross, I represent Cloverstree, which is the last application. It's my understanding that it is likely, unlikely that we will be reached, so I'd like to request this matter be carried until November 13 meeting.
Okay. Michael Gross for the Act of Cloverstree Properties, want to pay the vote for November 13 meeting.
Without further notice?
With the waiver applying and no further notice.
Correct.
Okay, is everyone okay with that? Do they ask for motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion for a second by Marty Gross. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gilly?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Rivia? Mr. Rivia?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Navdala?
Yes.
Thank you.
If anyone that's here for appeal number 4040 Cloverstree Properties, they'll be heard on November 13, uh, November 13 without further notice and with the waiver applying. I'm sorry, just for the record, I want to announce what we do to Rivia's here for the duration of the next meeting. We move forward, we're going to continue into appeal number 4041. One of the appeals. One of the appeals.
139 Somerset Avenue, lot 189, lot 139 R10 zone. Use variance with the duplex on a 10,000, 33 square feet, where 2,000 is required. Both variance required for a side yard and rear yard setbacks requested. Terry wrote in to your plan of 14, 217. The applicant is seeking approval to remove an existing senior family dwelling in a precinct and construct a duplex with unfinished basements. The applicant is conditional use underside block and both variance will be used for rear yard side and aggregate side yard setbacks.
Good evening, Brian. Mr. Flannery, thank you. Are you square or affirmative by the whole truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have two exhibits marked. A1 is a copy of the tax map showing in orange the subject property on Somerset Avenue. In pink is the area that we don't talk about with the duplexes on the small lots. The blue are the lots that were approved by this board in accordance with the 2007 master plan, which indicates this area should be zoned to, rezone to an R75. And the green are the other duplexes in the area. It's an area that's redeveloping. The current master plan that's up for adoption tomorrow night by the planning board also indicates this should be a R75 zone. It's the same-
The current management says that this area should be an R75?
The current master plan says it should be R75. The mass, the draft master plan that's up for consideration tomorrow night. Okay. So, the, um, as indicated, there's lots, and very similar to last application, it didn't go so well, where there's lots that are less than 10,000 square feet. This particular application is looking for, the existing lot is 10,033 square feet, and we're going to put a duplex on it. The master plan of 2007, on page 74, says rezone both R10 zones east of the downtown area to R75 to provide additional housing opportunities. The lot's also in the downtown regional center, which indicates that it's a, the historic heart of the town, which is surrounded by high to moderate density residential neighborhoods. And this is the same testimony that was provided on all those blue lots there, along with the master plan of 2007, to provide duplexes on 10,000 square foot lots where the, the R10 zone requires 12,000 square foot lots. The master plan also says on page 35, housing, there's been a tremendous residential growth in years, and for all the growth, however, not all of Lakewood's housing needs are met. It says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth principles. This is consistent with the smart growth plan, which has it in the downtown regional center. The municipal land use law NJAC 4055D2, under purposes of the act, A is encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state, no matter which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this does that, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and the environment. And again, it's my testimony that this does this. We need a use variance for this because since it is an ER10 zone and 12,000 square foot lots are required, we don't meet the conditions of the conditional use, so a use variance is required. We have to show special reasons, and one of the things normally we need to show for a use variance is why we're not consistent with the master plan. In this case, we are consistent with the master plan. We all know the master plan was never implemented because of the ongoing plan endorsement process. So, the, we're now up to, we're getting a new master plan, and hopefully the township will adopt ordinances, and then I don't have to come and go through this. But in the meantime, the area is redeveloping nicely, and I think this would be consistent with that area. I think that it does contribute to the, the well-being of the area. It is consistent with the, the goals of the, the master plan, and it does provide, promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare by redeveloping the area. One of the questions in Terry's report related to parking, on A2, I've indicated a parking configuration if the steps conflict with the two stacked parking spaces, that we could do one stacked and two side by side. If the board acts favorably on the application, obviously we'll present a plan to Terry within the constraints of what we're requesting, which would, could form with the required parking. The exact-
Can I have your report just one second, I'm gonna get a better information from Terry referring to the steps. What story here is?
If you look at the architectural plans, Chairman, there's a conflict with the way the evidence is shown compared to the original parking line on the various plan. And what Brian is showing is an alternate parking line.
But I want to understand why the parking alignment that he had on his side plan over here, I see four spaces in the front of the house, on, on, to the, to the left of the property.
The footprints, Chairman, that are shown on the various plan don't take into account the full extent of the front entrances. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes. If the front entrances had been added on, you would have seen parking and steps that conflict with the corner parking spaces. And it was just a matter of that when the variance map was prepared, the front steps weren't put on, so the applicant, if the board acts favorably, has two alternatives. One would be to move the steps so that they don't conflict, or to do the parking in the configuration that I've shown, which-
Otherwise that-
Okay. So, the relief that we're asking for is 10,000 square foot lot for a duplex where 12,000 square feet is required, and I've given the testimony, and it's consistent with the development in the area. With respect to the setbacks, we're complying with the R75 standards in all respects, but we need bulk variance relief from the R10. Side yard setback, the R10 requires 10, we're asking for 7.5. The aggregate side setback for the R10, 25 is required, we're asking for 15, which is consistent with the R75. And, and the rear yard setback, we're asking for seven, but that's to the deck only, where 20 feet is required. If, if the board doesn't like the, the deck, it can certainly be done with a patio or something-
But you move the deck over to the corner of the house, and you eliminate the whole thing?
Yes. The, the deck could slide over, you know, functionally for the family, and if you see the, the lot line that's here, we have a similar lot line over there.
Mr. Chairman, if you're already talking about the deck, how does it work for the whole triangle backyard?
Uh, the, the, the triangle backyard, although this map doesn't show it, the applicant would need to come back. Other, similar lots, it gets, gets divided up by going back a certain distance and then going-
So, Mr. Chairman, Brian is showing the side of the board.
Well-
Straight up, no?
Well, we're, we're not asking for subdivision at this time. That, that's one alternative, which would be straight up, and then the one unit gets a smaller backyard. Other applications that I've seen, being the, the one on Sterling, the line goes back and then turns so that each person gets a balanced backyard.
Well, you have to be consistent and have a part in that script of each lot.
Well, the ordinance does not require 5,000 in each lot. The ordinance requires the mother lot to be 10,000 square feet in the R75. Now, the applicant, when, if he goes to do the zero lot line subdivision, would need to present a plan, come back to the board. If the zone changes in the meantime, it would be a planning board application, and the ordinance does not require 5,000 in each lot. They just require that the mother lot be 10,000 square feet. So, that's the bulk variance relief that we're asking for is consistent with the R75 in every respect.
Okay. As normally, we're always doing, this, this, we'll get to the parking in a minute, but I think, I don't think, I think, side, the left and right side, perhaps thirty feet wide. You know, so normally, we've, we've, as a result as well, like, uh, let us know if we're, 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 we may, uh, let me know. Now- Now, talking about the, the parking lot, the, 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 you know, you know, I've been here twenty years, and- Just make it something somewhat decent in front as a whole. I can make a comparison, it's better than what the front of the house, like that.
Well, we don't have the whole-
And you have the two sides and a rear blacktop, I think, exactly.
Well, the, we, we have the same amount of blacktop whether we do two stacked or two in one. And if the board has a preference, we can, we can move the stacked parking so that it, and, and we can adjust the stairs so there's no conflict. I thought the, the board would like this because you, you have green area here, then this whole area is green.
Yeah, but you know, I, you know, it's-
Well, it's, it's, it's a balancing act, and I defer to the board's wisdom because sometimes I, I hear, you know, the stacked parking isn't ideal, it's better not, because then somebody in the back needs to get out, somebody else. Whatever, whatever the, the board, we would defer to the board's wisdom on how they would like the parking.
But I'd want, always like to see greener in between the parking, the houses surrounded, not one, um, two, eight car parking lot or ones, that looks like a basketball court or a tennis court.
The, the, we, we could still do-
Somewhat broken apart.
We could, we could still do two and, and one stacked by having the one stacked over to the side. There's a lot of different ways we could do it, so that then it would be green in between.
It should be nice, and not just a little two-foot strip.
Well, if, if, if the, if the board is saying you'd rather have the, the double two stacked, we'll do two stacked. If you're saying you just don't want to-
But then you have to move the stairs.
No, we can, we can move the-
You can redesign the front of the house.
We can, we can either redesign the stairs or move the parking so that it doesn't conflict with the stairs. It's something that, there, there are multiple options on, on how to do it, and, and we'd be-
I pay the vote of what, I for one, again, I had seven members here that can, well, they pay this, I take the total disagree with me, which I've done on one of my appeals. The house is to look somewhat like a home in front of the house, with green shrubs, grass, you know, it should look like your retirement home.
This, this is gonna have a lot of green area, not as much as mine, but it's gonna have a lot of green area, and, and we'll configure it, we'll configure it to whichever the way the board is comfortable. If, if, if the board's not comfortable without seeing anything, we can do what we've done in the past, is submit a couple of options for the board to look at when the board is doing their-
So, you're not even coming to subdivision, you're gonna come on the side plan?
Well, when we came with the subdivision, we, we would show exactly what it is, we'd show how the back line is. All we're asking for this evening is the use and the bulk variances consistent with the R75. We're not asking for a subdivision. If, if, if this is, if the board acted favorably and nothing else happened, it would be one unit built on, on the property, and we can provide options for the board to select, you know, so that we, we get a majority of, of the board on, on what is the best parking alternative. There's six different ways we could do it. I thought this was the best. Apparently, I was wrong again. I get that a lot at home, so, uh-
That retirement home.
Even in the retirement home, I get it a lot at home.
Terry, what do you think?
In terms of the parking line, how the parking line is?
This is like, try to get as good a agreement as you can, if you want to do something, do right.
You have a large common area, obviously, the way it's shown, where you have, you have, you have to give the figures parking. I thought I heard Brian say that you thought that you could move two sets of stacked driveways-
Yes.
And to have, to basically avoid the conflict.
Yes.
So, that's another possibility, Chairman. If I understand correctly, you could have a version of this, they may have to shift the locations of these seven of driveways. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. So, and there's no county issue, we have, we have a county for National Street, right?
Yes.
So, we're more flexible to work with.
Yes.
And we should take a look at our, on the subdivision, which we need the subdivision last time, right?
If they choose to come back with subdivision-
Wait, we're, we're coming back, we're coming back.
What?
What are you gonna subcut?
We're gonna do a zero lot line subdivision to put a lot line down the center of the property.
Okay, so now, all I suppose to do is, if we need the bulk variances of your side yard of 7.6.
Well, if, if there's no other questions, I would suggest we open it to the public, and, and I don't think there's anybody here, we could close it to the public, and then I would discuss with the applicant while the public is talking or not talking, what his feeling would be on that.
Okay, then I, I ask myself, what members of the board, if they have any question on this floor.
I have, I have some, one other question to me, the chairman already made a point about the side, the side setback. What about the backyard, is there a possibility of switching out the, the deck for a patio?
Morty, I had a recommendation, with the deck further over, so, so-
Also, if, if the house was, if this house gets shut, that'll be better.
But, 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 this, Morty, much like, I recommend to put this deck right in this corner. I understand, I understand that, but you, but you, you relieve, you relieve the, the gap of 7.6 or-
Or that option.
Brian, I have a few questions, if you have them.
One second.
Oh, sorry.
One other question. Somerset is a very narrow- Somerset is a very, a very narrow street, but you don't have that much room for parking, I understand the issue. But, definitely, the issue with the stacked parking, being able to back out two cars at Somerset, when the neighbor across the street, that duplex is gonna be doing the same thing, is definitely the issue. Is it aging, what you can do, I don't know if you can put in some, some turn space over here, so that when you, when you back out, they won't be backing out, is that possible? Can you figure it that way?
We, we, we can fit a hammerhead turnaround in there, it takes away from the green.
Right.
So, I, if, if the board has a consensus of how they would rather see it, and, and that's why, as the chairman had indicated, when we come back for the subdivision, we could provide a couple different alternatives, and, and the board pick the one they like the best, because that's the one that's the best.
Morty, just on that topic, you know, deciding to have to put a, put in a, a patch of sidewalk right in the middle over here, actually, cars can go around like this, see a little over there, basically, they pop up all over the place. I think it's a disaster. Doesn't work because people park their cars right in here, giving up a spot for a parking spot, so it defeats the whole purpose, and, 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 you see, you see all-
The best option, the best option would be, like, you see, is another option, I don't think you, you see, is another option, a single exit, and the space, the space on the side this way, the parking spots over here, that way, when they come out, it's just-
Yeah, they use the whole, but, but in a lot of places, we did, they decided to put this, um, um, drive between the two properties.
Yes, it doesn't, doesn't want some-
It does, it does work, because I, I, I walk around, oh, there's another parking spot, and, and it's the whole purpose, so, I for one, I would have slightly eliminated that, what the idea that you came up with, basically.
Can I clarify something, Terry?
Yes.
Um, Ryan, you talked about the subdivision coming back here at the board. If you get approval with some reason, if the subdivision that you want to be repaired conforms with this approval, wouldn't you just seek the ministry of minor, or volunteer to come back?
My, my understanding is, because it's a use variance, we would need to come back to the board.
So, so, so you agree that if you get the use variance tonight, you're coming back to the board?
Yes. My esteemed associate is telling me that I, I might be wrong in that interpretation, that a.
Well, that's why I wanted to mention now, I'm not sure the board is comfortable with that.
Well, well, we could, we could certainly present before the board memorializes it, sketches of the different options, and then the board could pick which option they wanted before you memorialize the resolution. You know, the, the question tonight is, does a duplex make sense here?
Do you have an answer, do you want to make the house narrower than that? Because that's a matter of difference, why?
Well.
So, I've done this tonight with my fellow board members, so let me just, and then I can discuss it with your applicant. I think, I think, I think, I think you want to.
Right, but also, the, the parking, I want to go back to the parking again. The, the way you have designed now, that parking is, is that from the street to the house, to the building itself, is thirty-seven point nine?
Yeah, that, no, that's from the right-of-way line to the house, it's thirty-seven point nine.
Okay, so where, where is the sidewalk?
The sidewalk is in the right-of-way. The right-of-way is fifty feet wide, the, the pavement on Somerset is only about thirty, so you have ten feet on each side, the sidewalk is in the right-of-way.
Because after, after the.
Between the.
Thirty-seven point nine plus ten.
Yes.
Okay. The second thing is.
Yes.
That in looking at the side yard, so you have seven point six in the side, plus you have the window wells for the basement.
Yes.
How far out into the side yard is the window?
Well, the, the window wells are normally two and a half to three feet. Seven and a half is a normal R7.5 standard, so we have window wells all over Lakewood that still leave enough room to get past.
Well, what, what's getting passed? People, emergency.
Emergency people.
Emergency people?
Lately, lately, I've seen some of those guys got pretty big in one. I'm not, I'm not in a squad.
I mean, I just, I, I love the chairman.
All, all of them, all of the emergency people get into the building through a three-foot wide door, so we're leaving four or five feet.
I understand that, I just, I just would like to see, like the chairman, I'd like to see a little bit more on the side yard. Also, are these, are these buildings, is the plan not to bench that, or add it on there?
Well, the, the plan, I, I think at this point, isn't confirmed, they don't, they don't have a buyer. Certainly, there would be steps to the attic. If, the, the way the ordinance is written, if there's bedrooms in the attic, that, we know there's not going to be any outside stair to the attic, there's going to be no way to rent the attic, but if there's bedrooms in the attic, then additional parking is needed, and, and I don't see that fitting, so I, I don't see bedrooms in the attic here.
Which, which then brings me to the basement, which for some reason, I, this is like, every, every once in a while, like probably every seven years or so, we see somebody have a big unfinished basement, and it's not a private residence. There's an unfinished basement, I see, is there, is there just the one private entrance in the basement?
That's what it shows, yeah.
One entrance to basement?
Consider it a, consider it a big foundation, with the one.
Just one entrance.
And it's a front, the apartment as back cap.
No, they only see one, they want to make sure it's only one.
Consider, consider an apartment in the basement.
Now, we wouldn't have to deal with the first step.
Right. It, it, it's one front entrance to an apartment in the basement. Same, same as, same as everybody else in.
Just consider that, consider an apartment in the basement. And there is no, and looking over here, there is no outside stairs, you can go up in the attic. It's all in the inner wall, by the inner walls.
Well, I, I typically, the biggest concern I have is, you know, obviously, the parking and everything else, I'd like to see a little more room on the side of the park.
This is that subdivision of that lot, is the man.
Yeah.
Show, show it, so we can look at it.
Yeah, we're working out on that, yeah, around the ten-foot side.
The, the plans are, yeah, the front elevation shows absolutely no issues at this time, and the basement plan does show an entrance basement, so I'm not sure if, you know, I'm going to go with the chairman, I would consider it like a ten-foot basement, but the plans don't make sense, so I mean, we're, it's something I believe that is not persistent, but also now, this one deck is going to have to be pulled forward, we're going to have to put stairs there now.
Well, we should.
What? The, the, when you look at the elevation, you, you don't, you don't see the steps, because there's a wall in front of it. If you look on the floor plan above it, there's the steps.
I don't see another white letter.
I mean, we had initially the stairs not coming out.
Well, if, if you look at the right-side elevation, you see where the porch is, next to that porch is where the steps go down.
And they enter through the red.
Underneath the porch.
Shows brick. You mean, there's supposed to be a door there?
Well, you don't see the door, because it's below the dirt.
But you shouldn't.
There's.
Unless you say there's going to be a plug, it's a very good basement.
Yes.
Yes.
Unless we guys three feet that's going down. Because that has to be, that has to be drawn very high.
We, we could, we could certainly, we could, we could certainly have the architect draw below grade, so that you could see where the door is, and in, in that area, you, it almost looks like there's a door, it's hard to see what it is.
I see a little piece there, but it breaks up, and I'm assuming that it's going to have to be brought outwards towards the property line.
No, no.
For somebody that has a bedroom.
No, no, it, it's, it's, it's very typical, that it starts at the end of the house, and you take steps down, because it's, you have a couple steps up, and you can count the number of steps, it works, the number of steps going up and down, by the time you get to the other one above it.
He forgot to draw the basement stairs. I know he's saying she walks over here, but he missed it, he missed it on the front of the.
I, I, I don't like to criticize other professionals, and, and architects are very artistic people, right.
You don't want to keep on the last few whole year, right? Right, the stairs in the basement are supposed to go down over here on the side.
Yes.
Forgot to draw it in, plain and simple, okay?
So is it, is that it will not affect now the side yard?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, I'm.
Yes.
Exactly, that's what you want to say.
That, that is my testimony.
Now, I want to see how, if you put the stairs in, if you put the parking lot in, that has one foot front and one on, is that going to get moved?
And, and my suggestion is that we could provide sketches on the various ways of doing that, and, and provide them to the board before you vote on the, the resolution memorializing the application.
I do want to present that, I agree very much with the chairman, that these houses should be.
All right, well, it, it seems like we're down to the houses should, there should be more side setback, and, and the applicant should be sworn and speak to that.
Are you ready to continue? Do we have any other comments on both of the board members?
Just one question on Terry, I was, what was people trying to think of? Where would they, what would people try to?
Yeah, it's conventional definition of duplex, it's, it's.
It's usually family. It's more like a new.
No. You have duplex, and you have Lakewood duplex.
Well, it's married, and I can actually come on up.
No, the proposal is.
I, I, I don't know if the chairman wants to hear from the public before hearing from the applicant.
I'll make sure that I have any more questions from my fellow board members. Is everyone okay? Okay, so we'll open to the public. Anyone from the public?
Is there any more testimony if you have the application?
Well, the, the applicant will, is going to talk after the public on the board's request to.
I can address his issues as well.
Yes, and, and if, if there's a neighbor that has a comment, the applicant will address that as well. Okay.
Okay, so anyone from the public, we heard forty-one, I'm sorry, forty, forty-one, the applicant's in the application, please step up. So go ahead.
Sir, just a moment, before this gentleman starts, Mr. Pepper, who is the attorney for thirty-nine sixty-six A, a new board of the state of Gobius, he has a new problem, and he doesn't think he can stay much longer, because it doesn't, there's at least one more application on it for his.
Right.
So with your honor, with, if your honor is willing to say, would you like to carry those two applications to November?
No problem, I, I fairly understand them.
And we ought to, I don't know if anyone is here in the public for new board or Gobius states, but will be carried to November?
So let's find that in a minute. Is anyone here from the public on appeal number thirty-nine sixty-six A or thirty-nine sixty-six B, please step up. Seeing none, can I have a motion at the table, thirty-nine sixty-six A, for the state of Gobius State, for November thirteenth, motion from you, Riviat, second.
Okay.
Second, and Morty Rose, man, secretary, roll deal, please.
Mr. Gilli?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Riviat?
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes, so if anyone that's here for appeal number thirty-nine sixty-six A, thirty-nine sixty-six B, that application will be heard on November thirteenth. Jeremy, I'm sure you, you spoke to that, and it's that, for the notice?
Yes.
Of the way we're applying?
Yes, both.
Okay, let's hear, let's make sure we have that on the record.
Sir, could you, I raise your right hand.
Go ahead.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
And begin with the mic, could you give your full name and value of it?
Yes, my name is Gershon Ullmann, U-L-L-M-A-N-N.
And your first name?
Gershon, G-E-R-S-H-O-N. Yes, I'm six-four-five Sterling Avenue. I'm directly behind it, means my lot, I have also like a.
Angle?
I have the angle, yes, but yes, but yes, it's not divided straight, it's divided on an angle.
One thirty-seven.
Right, lot one thirty-seven point one, I think it is, the left one.
Is there duplex on your lot?
There is a duplex on my lot.
Okay, so which duplex, do you want the left one or the right one, the shorter one or the longer one?
The shorter one.
Okay.
The shorter one with the, it's divided on an angle.
What?
It's divided on an angle.
It's divided on an angle.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not anti-development, or I'm not, I don't know if I want, you know, duplex there, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the privacy. Paper that I got says that you request a rear yard setback variance, where twenty feet is required, seven feet at corner of house deck is requested. I'm, I'm a bit concerned about my privacy over there, with the deck coming all the way out, like almost all offense.
So you're meeting up to seven feet, side yard setback where, where there is, and that's your backyard?
That's my backyard, the side, right, there's a seven.
How far is your deck going to have the property?
How close is my deck in the property line? I have no idea. I don't know, I never made the calculation.
But when you stand behind your deck, you mean it's more than like two arm months?
On the corner, it's, not that much space on the corner, maybe a little more than that.
What kind of fence is that?
Um, short fence, short, right, I, I believe it's their fence.
You know, how, how big the size, how, how large the size do you want?
I don't know, I don't know, I'm, I wasn't the, I was just, I'm just a buyer.
So you wouldn't know if there was a variance requested for any deck?
No, it was developed, and it was, it was developed and sold, it was developed and sold, and I, I'm just the buyer, I live there.
How long did you move it?
Around, I moved in at the end of February.
It's like this, this a hundred, a hundred and fifty, on the point.
Yeah, it's short, that's as short as.
The short one, they do it like a hundred and nine.
So it'll last longer.
So it's got to be, at least ten feet on that, at least ten feet coming up.
It'll be less. But normally, say ten feet.
Do you have a fence up there?
There is a small fence, yes.
Well, if you, if you heard that conversation before, we discussed.
Are you?
To make the house narrower, at least the ten feet, but that's what required.
Right.
So, it is, we haven't heard yet, if he agrees to make the house narrower, give us the ten feet, have to move the deck over, so.
I mean, he's moving the deck, or giving ten feet at the deck also, means now he's asking for seven.
If, if, if he agrees to what we recommended and suggested, the house will come narrower, so therefore, it's going to be seven, ten feet side yard, side yard, then the corner of the seven feet will also automatically pull in to ten feet, and then the question just remains on the deck, where exactly the deck is going to be, if he agreed to put it in the patio, or move the deck over to the corner of the house, in the corner of the house, so.
Second, to switch to patio would mean?
Ground level.
Ground level, oh.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's what we discussed, I don't know if that would be a issue.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, anyone from the public want to be heard? Seeing none, closing to the public.
Yes.
Okay, Ryan, what was it?
The, the applicant is here, if he could be affirmed.
Jeremy, do you affirm that you have the whole truth to help you go?
Yes.
Would you give us your full name, this is about your left.
Morichai Finkelstein, F-I-N-K-E-L-S-T-E-I-N.
Thank you.
On one-one-four Hadassulain. I had a chance to speak to the neighbor before the meeting, and I'm actually working with a different plan on the house, that'll satisfy all of his concerns and many of the board's things that were addressed, maybe I should have spoken first. Can I come up and show the board?
No.
Okay, but basically, what I'm working with is, instead of, and I would add, instead of both homes being thirty by fifty, the one that's closer to the neighbor would be a wider thirty-five, but shorter house, so it wouldn't reach that far into his corner that's going to be bordering on the new left, on the new right lot, and the one to the, to the left would be a twenty-five by sixty, a little bit longer, so it would give him more space from his corner, it would also.
Well, sorry, is the wide by what?
One of them would be a thirty-five, the one that's closer to the, yeah, the one that's closer to the neighbor would be a thirty-five by forty, forty-two, and.
Talking about it moving this line over, and taking this back up.
Should be taking eight feet off of it. Okay.
And, and then taking this back.
Right, but still be the same seven feet, seven and a half feet.
Right, but I, I would eliminate the setback back here.
But on the side over there, it's still be seven.
On the side, I would still request, request that.
We, we had a problem with on the side also.
But it, firstly, it would solve the parking I have in the front, I have a huge amount of space between, I'm setting apart the parking, and I can add beautiful grass and make it look really nice and aesthetic, and enables, and enables both these people to have, this guy's deck will be up against this guy's wall, further away from the neighbor, and giving him the privacy that he wants.
Okay, I, I don't know if you know, Brian, that who knows, when we start re-drawing an application like this, what you would like to do is to come back and show us on paper. I know you gave it to me right over here.
Right, but I'm, we're coming back, we, we, this is for a use variance, we're coming back in any case with the.
No, 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 it's a use variance, you can come back based on giving some minor adjustments, but now you're re-drawing the whole thing, so if you re-drawing the whole thing, I want to see the whole thing redrawn. You know, if we're talking about just, uh, greens to make the house narrower, and fix my parking, okay, but now if we have to redraw everything, make the house all different sizes, it's a, it's a different thing to the matter. sizes, it's a different, it's a different, it's a dynamic.
Well, if the board could bifurcate it and give us just the use, I think we all said a duplex here makes sense, it's the bulk variances and the configuration that we're now trying to make so that the duplex that goes there makes sense.
Ryan, I'll make a very simple for you. I think you heard the fellow board numbers, that 7 and 1/2 feet is not going to go, 2 and 1/2 of these minimums 10. The front yard parking is not going to go, we need to have that fixed. These are what I consider, I think Judith said that, I think Morty Rose said that, right? I think others said that.
They're just saying, what, you're saying a duplex makes sense as is, it does not make sense.
This design.
This is.
So if you want to ask me to vote on the conditions to be set forth, fine. If you want to redesign, please come back and then we'll take a look at it as a redesign.
They're not really giving us a choice.
I can leave it this, I can leave it the way it was.
But then again, the nine.
The nine?
Yes, I got one.
I'll get 10 now also. No, I'm going to get 10 now. In the future, I'm going to get 7 and 1/2. I'm going to get 10 anyway, so I'm going to get a 10.
You can get 10, you can get 10 now, you don't want to see the plan, right?
No, they're not going to give me 10 now, they're giving me 7 and 1/2 now and later. I mean, 10 now and later.
They're not giving you 7 and 1/2 now.
In the future.
Go for 10 now. They're saying, go for 10. If you go for 10 now, but they're saying they want to see the plans.
Okay, so I would change the plans, I won't change the plans of the public. In the future, they're not, in the future, they're going to give me 7 and 1/2? In a month, they'll give me 7 and 1/2?
No.
If the major issue is the 10 feet, the applicant said he'll give 10-foot side setbacks
and we won't ask for the 7 and 1/2-foot setbacks, we'll ask for the 10 and we'll adjust the parking as we had indicated to make it work.
But the parking has to fit the way you expect the board to, based on the discussion we had.
Yes, and my suggestion would be we could provide sketches of how to do that before the board votes on memorializing the resolution.
Now, would you say the 10 feet, I'm going to do the back corner, it's automatically going to fall.
Well, the back corner moves over when we.
And what do we do with the back deck?
The back deck will slide over into the corner the way the board asked.
Okay, so now, another question, if you make, if you're going to make the house 10 feet shorter, are you making the house longer? And therefore you're not eliminating my, my 7-foot rear yard issue.
The, the, the unit on the short side, we're not going to make any longer because we can't. The unit on the other side, we would ask to make it longer because we can't.
Okay. So the unit on the short side will stay at 50?
Yes.
28 by 50, let's roughly think, 27 and 1/2 by 50?
27 and 1/2 by 50.
27 and 1/2 by 50? So then automatically these two, these three side yards are going to get eliminated based on what we discussed.
Yes, yes.
And over here, you're going to go to 55 or whatever.
Yes.
But you're not going to create another.
Correct, no, no, no variances, yes.
So when you subdivide the property now, you're going to have to know how to do it.
Yes, we know how to do it. Not my first rodeo.
So the, the unit on the left side will have a 10-foot setback.
Both, both.
Both units, yes, both will have 10-foot setbacks.
The house 27, 27 and 1/2, one, the length of the 11 is on one way. You, you're not going to put a 10-foot fence in 27 and 1/2.
The house will have a width of no more than 27.5.
No problem. And we would agree to a privacy fence to the, to the neighbor.
Privacy?
Privacy. 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 Typically, it would be 6-foot.
Okay, we'll get, okay. Guys, you're okay with what we discussed?
6-foot, 6-foot.
Guys, if you guys are okay with it and our next motion?
That's just, that's just.
Right.
That's what I understand is. Each of the lots will be no more, more than 27.5.
The house.
Sorry, the houses will be no more than 27.5. Each has a 10-foot side, probably 6-foot privacy fence along the common boundary line with this gentleman's, which is on block 137. All the usual lang tree of requirements in terms of irrigation. So there's, there will be no, there will only be an inside step to the attic, only one outside step to the basement.
Which will not protrude from the footprint of the house.
Which will not.
The discussion will be with him, the person that do not go inside.
Don't show on the sign now, so the, the steps will make.
And the parking configuration.
That's, that's what I want to get, I'm not exactly sure what you decide on the park.
We didn't, he's going to have to come back and park the configuration. Before, before we memorialize this application, for us to choose a, a parking configuration?
I think, I think though the understanding of the parking is that there has to be some color there on the front lawn.
Yes, there should be some greenery. That's, there should be some.
I think that, I think that the chairman was concerned about looking at the parking.
Correct.
Do you think there's that revision also in?
I believe so. We just have to come back for the front of the park.
All right, well, can I suggest this as part of the parking, that the applicant submit proposals and they do for, so that we at least look at them and have a look at them at night.
Yes, absolutely.
And then we'll take a while for the seven members of the board to decide, based on the Chinese menu, we're going to take care of it.
Yes, yes.
And another thing, I think he mentioned that the, the house on the right side will stay 27 and 1/2 by 50, but the house on the left will stay 27, and he didn't give him the length of the deck.
Well, it won't violate any setback tomorrow. It's going to be 10 foot on one side.
Well, yes, but this house will stay at 50 feet. Yes, yes, because they have, the left side won't violate any new setbacks, you may not want to be. Correct.
So the southerly house, the depth of it would not be more than 50 feet. The northerly house could, as long as it doesn't create any more variances.
Correct.
And I, I think it would be, rather than saying each house at 27 and 1/2, because it might make more sense to make the house on the south 29 feet and the other house, but we keep the 10 foot on each side. I don't think that affects the board at all. The board doesn't want to see closer than 10 feet. So since the, the house on the south is a little bit shorter, maybe if that's 29 feet and the other house, you take the difference out of it, nobody's going to know driving by and it'll be better for the future owners, which is what my real concern is.
You don't want to claim a new set of plans.
I was hoping the board could conceptualize that and we wouldn't need a new set of plans. You're, you're the board, so.
This is for my.
Yep.
Okay. We do, we almost had. Okay, so this will be with us, you and we will discuss.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve based on the board's condition. You guys are the boss.
I'm the one checking. Can I give it to you again?
We have a motion from Morty Rose, can I have a second? Based on the conditions we just discussed. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Obi Gonzalez, secondary.
Mr. Gilli.
Yes, but we're going to be able to see when exactly the property.
At least 10 days before November 13th.
How are we going to see it?
Until the government of France and France.
Without, without the government.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Brian, that's right?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Halverson.
No.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, good night and good luck.
Thank you.
Moving forward, appeal number 4042, Mark Press.
14th Friday around 2:51.04, lot 76.01, our 12 zone, construction of single family home, a variance request is one setback and lot coverage. Terry Road, senior planner, office 17, 2017. Single family homes is a committee group, so you're in 12 zone. Both barriers will be requested, 2 yard setback, 75 feet control is 30 required, building coverage, 32% setback, which is 30% still out.
Hi, is there another requirement?
No.
Ryan, I'm scared, until the whole.
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. This, this is another estate house in the woods, pretty close to the last, pretty close to the last one we have.
Yeah. We're on the, why don't, no. Need to drive. Okay, but it's not in the CLP.
The front setback is 25 instead of, instead of 16, which was the other one down the street.
Can I make a, can I make a, can I make a little change?
Yes.
Based on, based on the variance map you have over here, basically the variance map you have over here, you are seeking two variances, a front yard 25 feet and a, and a, and a coverage of 2%.
Yes.
Is this the whole application?
Yes.
Good. Anyone in the public here that want to be heard on this application, please step up. Seeing none, nobody in the public. Okay, guys, you want to hear Brian's testimony, there's nothing necessary, everything is necessary and required.
I want to hear what was here.
And how liquid these houses, there's no basement in this apartment.
What about an A?
What about an A? What's the?
Is there a basement? Is there a way for about a basement?
There is a basement.
Is there going to be separate entrance to the basement?
Uh, no, no separate entrance to the basement.
So there won't be any independent living spaces, that would.
Basement rental, right?
No, no, excuse me, wait, I have five people on the.
Ryan, I've noticed that you have to have, can't leave this, you listen to public parking lot?
There's no independent living space.
Let's get some.
I do, Mayeshi, Mayeshi Tress.
Do you swear or?
Affirm.
What's the name?
Mr. Tress. Mr. Tress, I have a question for you, are you putting a problem in the basement?
I am not.
Are you putting a problem in the attic?
There's an attic? I don't believe there's even, no attic.
No attic?
I don't believe so.
Is there an attic?
No, there's no attic.
There's no separate living and if there's an attic, there's no separate living.
There is not.
If there is nothing, you would not be ready to be there.
Definitely not.
And your wife's room, the other house, who are you going to move to?
I'll be in the basement.
You'll be in the basement.
Well, once a year when Brian shoots in my backyard, the deer, I might hang out back there.
Okay, so beautiful, what I know.
Thank you.
I have a motion, a motion, I'm making a motion to approve. Just before we make that motion, just want to make sure the language and language rules are in. Yes. We have some break running, a little, we're asking the.
There'll be proof of.
And, and, and there'll be vegetation with deer. With deer. Who's my motion? Motion from, from Mary Yelly. Can I have a second?
Mr. Ingraham.
Second under Mr. Ingraham.
Mr. Gilli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halvistown.
Yes, good night.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to close tonight's meeting? Motion. Good night. See you November 13th.
I just gave it a check perfectly, check for everything else.
Thank you, boys.
Perfect.
Are you doing well?
I hope I'm good. He doesn't come back.